Lou, can we have an announcement of the public hearing?
This public hearing is being held to solicit comments from the public on the intention of the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic to sell a 81,386 square foot or 1.35 acre parcel at 317 Pennsylvania Avenue Patterson, New Jersey, block 1702, Lot 2. The purpose of the proposal is to conduct an open public sale at auction to the highest bidder pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in NJ SA 40A:12-3 at SEC and Resolution Number R 2020 00, I'm sorry, 2020 0831 approved by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic on October 13, 2020. This vacant office warehouse property is no longer needed by the public using the use following the consolidation of county operations at other physical locations.
Thank you.
The Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders are holding this public hearing tonight, Tuesday, December 8, 2020, at 5:15 PM virtually at the Passaic County Administration Building, 401 Grand Street, Patterson, New Jersey, 07505. This public hearing was published in the Herald News and the Record on October 22, 2020. Public is invited to virtually participate in the public hearing and offer comment and/or provide written comment on the proposed property. The period for the public to provide such comment will commence upon receipt of this notice and shall remain open until two weeks after the public hearing, which will be the close of business on December 22, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Freeholders, actor.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
You're on mute.
Here.
James.
Here.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Here.
Director Lozare.
Here. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make that motion.
Second. I'll second it.
Roll call, Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. If any member of the public would like to make a comment on the proposed sale of 317 Pennsylvania Avenue Patterson, New Jersey, they can either use the raise hand feature of Webex or make a comment on the Facebook Live page. Please give your name and address and just know that it should be a Webex comment and you will have three minutes to speak.
Director, before you open the public portion, just maybe if we could just have a little bit of, if I could ask committee counsel to talk a little bit about the process, I'll talk a little bit about the process and then we could open it up to the public just so that everything is on the record.
Sure. I'm great.
Thank you.
County Council.
Yep, Director, through you. So as you all know, the county is in the process of finalizing the construction of the Public Works facility in Wayne whereby we are going to consolidate all of our Public Works operations out of that facility. What that did was render 317 Pennsylvania Avenue no longer needed for public use. So on October 13, the Board passed a resolution stating that, that it was no longer needed for public use after the facility was built. We retained Max Span, which is an auctioneer company that does a lot of auctions throughout the state, to conduct an auction to the highest and best bidder. And then there was various other public notice requirements that we had to do, including this public hearing. We did two different notifications in the newspaper. We sent notifications to property owners within 200 feet and we notified all the municipalities in the county. Finally, we had to prepare a report required under 4812-13.5, which has been posted on the county website and available to the public 30 days prior to this hearing. And that's all the procedural steps we took. We held the auction on December 3 and I think I can kick it to the administrator to talk about what occurred there.
So prior to the auction actually taking place, there was, Max Span obviously markets this well. This is what they do. They do it very well. Not the first time the county has used Max Span to auction off excess property. They've had 25,000 unique visits to their websites, 186 total inquiries on the property. They had 146 bidders pre-register and we had 61 bidders that actually came onsite to do a physical tour of the building to see what they were bidding on. As Matt said, the auction was held, I believe it opened up on Tuesday morning at nine o'clock. Was that, do I have those times right? And ended at one o'clock on Thursday. The interesting part about the auction is if there was a, if there's a new bid within two minutes of closing, they extend the auction for another two minutes so that it gives another bidder the opportunity to bid. That went on for 20 minutes after one o'clock, so I think the bidding actually closed at 1:00, at 1:20. As you know, we received, it's been reported and obviously I sent the freeholders an email, the winning bidder, the winning bid price was $5,510,000. We have received a 10% deposit as of that day. On this evening's meeting, there is a resolution authorizing us to sign the contract. We'll go through a normal due diligence of any real estate transaction, like any other real estate transaction that would take place in the state of New Jersey. The interesting part was the appraised value of the property was $2.6 million, so we received more than twice the appraised value for the property, which I think, you know, bodes well for the city of Patterson, that the city of Patterson has become a place where people want to build and invest money. So I think that's a, that's a good thing for all of us. As you know, the building will go back on the tax rolls, which is another good thing for Patterson as well. So all in all, very pleased, very shocked. We didn't, we weren't sure we would even get the appraised value, so very happy that we sit here today at $5.5 million. As Matt said, we are in the process of occupying the new facility in Wayne on Route 23, commonly known as the Nike Base. Furniture was being delivered today. Kenny has bought up a bunch of his equipment. The salt shed has been filled. Gas tanks will be filled this week and he actually hopes to be operating out of there this Friday. And again, just, you know, we talked about this when we decided to do the Nike Base, the Nike Base project, which will come in on budget. Haven't had a change order on the project yet. It's about a $16 million project. So if we think of, you know, this sale, which the Nike Base allowed us to sell this property, it's about a third of what the new construction is. So, you know, all in all, I think it's a, it's a great, a great deal for the taxpayers of Passaic County. I have nothing else.
Director, if I may, just to put this on the record as well, as the clerk stated, members of the public can submit written comments to me as the contact on our public notice up until the close of business on December 22, 2020. To date, I haven't received any written comments and if the Board approves the resolution on our regular meeting, we can close 90 days after today's date, which is our due diligence period.
We can open up the floor to any comments, concerns, questions.
I think we would need a move in a second for the...
I thought we did that, the motion to open up the public hearing.
Then you would just need a roll call then, I'm sorry.
We did do the roll call, Director. I mean, administrator.
Okay.
Do we know if we have any comments on Facebook Live?
Okay, as of right now, Facebook Live, there is no comments except a person just making a comment but not in relation to the project. Also, I'd just been informed by our MIS department that there has been no hands up and participants through the, through the Webex.
We can take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to close.
Close of public hearing.
Yeah, I'll move to close.
We need a second. Second.
Second. Okay, Bartlett, Freeholder Bartlett. Freeholders, actor.
He's on mute.
Freeholder public.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes.
I think Freeholder actor is now off of mute. Freeholder, if you want to just record your vote? No, I saw the mute button go off.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Hello, no, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yes, please, thank you, yes.
All right, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Hold on for one second, Director.
Sure.
Freeholder, I did Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
It was a yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director, Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes, yes. Okay, see you at the next meeting. We're done, right?
We can just stay on this, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'm just gonna stay on it.
And it's 5:30, so you can, you can start, Director.
Oh, my goodness, okay. Okay. Welcome to December 8, 2020, State County Board of Chosen Freeholders meeting. Can we start with a roll call, please?
Freeholders, actor.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best. Duffy.
He said yes.
James.
Here.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Here.
Director Lozare.
Yes. Thank you, Director.
Okay.
And ask for the open public meeting law.
Take notice that Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders on January 6, 2020 adopted Resolution R-2020-0001, which calls for the location of the conference regular meeting schedule for Tuesday, December 8, 2020, at 5:30 PM and 6:00 PM respectively. Due to the state of emergency and the public health emergency declared by New Jersey Governor Philip Murphy, set forth by the Executive Order Number 103 and further limitations on public gatherings, set forth in Executive Order 104, the Board will hold the regular meeting virtually via Facebook Live and Cisco Webex. Additionally, pursuant to Administrative Order Number 20-01 issued by Passaic County Administration, Passaic County Administrator, closing the administration building to non-essential personnel and the public effective March 18, 2020, at 8:30 AM. The Board is canceling the conference agenda, agendas for these meetings and shall hold the regular meeting at 5:30 PM with no members publicly physically present as authorized under NJ SA 10:4-12A. If a member of the public wishes to place public comment on record, please email public@passaiccountynj.org stating your name, address, and matter to be addressed by the Board no later than 5:00 PM December 8, 2020, or by participating on Facebook Live at facebook.com/passaiccountynj/ the clerk of the Board shall read the same into public record. Moreover, some members of the Board may participate telephonically pursuant to the Board bylaws and in compliance with NJ SA 10:4-12-1 at SEC. Official action will be taken. This was published in the Herald News and the Bergen Record.
Thank you. Could we have the invitation, please?
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freeholders in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to every public who stands in front of my people, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Can I have a moment of silence to remember the women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces? And in addition to that, we lost one of our State County family members, Keith Caola. He was a supervisor for the Parks Department. Our hearts and warm wishes go out to his family and to Bill Leese, a councilman in Little Falls, who we lost just last week, last summer. Again, our prayers go out to the family.
And Director, I just found out one of our employees at the Superintendent of Elections Office suddenly passed away, yes, or last night, so we could add him to our thoughts as well.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. And can I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 16?
They're moved.
Second. Lou, you're on mute, Lou.
Okay. I'm sorry, I apologize. Freeholders, actor.
Yeah.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes.
Director Lozare.
Yes. I would now like to invite Dr. Charlie Gungill, our Director of our Health Department. She's with us tonight, Mr. Dunlop. Dr. Gungill.
I don't know if she is on. I know that she was at a test site today.
Okay.
A busy one, too, I take it, so.
So maybe, yeah. Okay.
So she may just be running late and if it's okay, if she, if she comes on, we'll...
Sure, she can jump in whenever she gets here and I know it's been a long day for her.
Yeah.
She's been doing a lot of great work. I think tested a lot of people today, as every day.
Mike is telling me she's having some connectivity issues, so hopefully we'll get those straightened out and then we'll be able to, to hear from Dr. Gungill.
Sure, she can jump on whenever she gets connected. Okay, we're going to move on to Freeholder Reports and I'd like to begin by reading a statement regarding property at 296 Church Lane in Wayne, New Jersey. And I thank you all for joining us this evening and happy belated Thanksgiving. I'm going to read a brief statement regarding the Board's proposed sale of 296 Church Lane. Last year, the county was approached by a contiguous property owner asking whether the county would be interested in selling the property. After an internal review, it was determined that this property was no longer needed for public use. Now, this is not to say there is not some public value to the parcel. Legally, it means that it is surplus property that the county no longer needs for a project or some other county-led endeavor. So now, whenever county or municipal government in New Jersey is selling real estate property not needed for public use, there are several procedures, legal or illegal conditions that must be satisfied. These include both public notices and public hearings, among other items. In my opinion, these conditions are in place to ensure that the Board is having the public's input on a proposed sale before it closes on the transaction and can make a decision that is in the best public interest. Here, the Board received valuable input at the first public hearing, information and feedback that otherwise was not contemplated by the county. After discussing this feedback with my colleagues and the county administrator, we made a determination that it is not the right move to move, it's not the right time to move forward with this proposed sale in light of the public comments received at the first hearing, which was at our last Freeholder Meeting. Consequently, I asked that a resolution be listed on tonight's agenda canceling the second public hearing and the proposed sale of 296 Church Lane. I am confident that all my colleagues will support this resolution. Over the next several months, the county is going to hold an open public auction and sell the property to the highest bidder after compliance with the notice conditions as set forth in the law. We thank you so much for your participation at the last meeting in this public process and we will continue to keep everyone updated on the status of the sale on the county's website and as required under law. So that's the property that we all spoke about at the last meeting. Next, I'd like to read into the Record of Proclamation for Lourdes Cortez. She was a good friend to all of us. She was with, she worked with the bank, North Jersey Federal Credit Union, and I'm gonna just take a minute and read this proclamation. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic has a desire to recognize Lourdes Cortez, who is being honored at the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders meeting on Tuesday, December 8, 2020. And whereas Lourdes Cortez began her service as CEO of North Jersey Federal Credit Union with branches in Toto and Newark and Elmwood Park. And whereas Lourdes Cortez became the first Latina CEO of a major credit union in New Jersey and has been instrumental in increasing assets from $161 million to $233 million in the past 15 years. And whereas Lourdes Cortez prioritized community involvement, using her influence to support various national and local charities on behalf of North Jersey Federal Credit Union, such as Community Action Social Affairs, March of Dimes, and the American Cancer Society. And whereas Lourdes Cortez recognized the growth of the Hispanic community and implemented initiatives to include Spanish-speaking employees at every branch and instituted an LGBTQ inclusive environment, providing benefits to employees and their partners long before those rights were recognized in New Jersey. Whereas Lourdes Cortez was presented with a Jefferson Award by Governor Phil Murphy in 2019 for her public service. And whereas Lourdes Cortez, due to her perseverance, her passion, and knowledge during her years as CEO, served on the Board of Directors for the Chiricke County Chamber of Commerce and on the Board for Executive Women of New Jersey. And whereas Lourdes Cortez was nominated as CEO of the Year by the National Association of Federally Insured Credit Unions honoring her for her excellence and achievement in the industry. And whereas Lourdes Cortez is known by her colleagues as a dependable leader and friend who is passionate about her work and the community and is unselfishly ready to help when needed. So now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it publicly acknowledges Lourdes Cortez as a fitting tribute for the significant contribution she has made and the time and the effort which she has devoted to the citizens of the County of Passaic. And be further proclaimed that this Board wishes Lourdes Cortez a happy and healthy retirement. Congratulations, Lourdes. Enjoy your retirement. Okay, next is Deputy Director Lepore.
Yes, thank you, Director. Am I on? I have 21 resolutions with my committee of public works for the, for my colleagues' review and support and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Freeholder actor.
Thank you so much, Director. Just a couple quick hits, I want to congratulate our county administrator on the sale of the property on Pennsylvania Avenue. For those who aren't aware, that's our former county administration building, which, you know, when I came upon it, you know, not realizing what it was for the first time, it looked like, like an abandoned ghost town, basically. And it was a blight on an area that's growing in South Patterson and we're grateful to see that new development will be there, but I think we need to congratulate our administrator because he's another example of forward-looking, not sitting on old property, not thinking about what needs to happen, not just today, but into the future. And so we've timed this perfectly, I think, for the taxpayers and for development and all of it. And I think it's a good example of good government, so kudos to everyone on that. Also, we, last week, I was able to join Mayor Saya at Lou Costello Park, which I'm proud to say that we provided open space funds for the planning, for the planning study that helped put together what we wanted to do there, including building a playground for autistic children in the city of Patterson, which would be the first of its kind. And Congressman Pascrell was able to deliver federal funds to help get the construction done, so they're gonna get to work. And I was, I'm glad to see that Mayor Saya is working hand-in-hand with our county and with our federal officials to make sure that we protect our green spaces and our recreational spaces in the city of Patterson and, you know, we're proud to work with them as a county to utilize our open space funds to get that done. And finally, I just want to say...
You're breaking up, it's, I don't, anyone else is having difficulty, but I'm having difficulty understanding.
Yeah, and I lost video. I mean, this is like a...
That's a problem. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bartlett.
Thank you very much, Director. I kind of can't believe it's December already. I was, of course, most of us are on Facebook and one of the things I like about Facebook is the way that every so often it will pop up a memory to remind you of a post from a year or two or five earlier and that always gives me the chance to say, oh, I remember going to the brownstone, I haven't been there in eight months, or I remember the various service work that we do. And I was struck earlier this week, and I reshared it for those of you who know me on Facebook, it was a post from five years ago when Freeholder Duffy and I, along with Dr. Gungill and numerous others, were all together up in West Milford at a middle school, running a drill with local law enforcement, local OEMs. were all together up in West Milford at a middle school, running a drill with local law enforcement, local OEM, local government organizations, hospitals, even the Boy Scouts. And it was about preparedness for an anthrax epidemic or an anthrax release. And of course, that's not exactly what we're dealing with as a country today, but it was a good reminder to me of how the work that we do just to be ready for things can save lives. And I hope Dr. Gungill, if she's not with us, I know she'll be joining us shortly. The fact that we have been spending so much time getting ready is part of what has enabled us to do all the things that this county has done this year. And I just want to acknowledge that because in the years when we aren't coping with circumstances like this, it's easy to think about preparedness exercises and things like that as redundancy, as, you know, hypotheticals. But what you see is that when the hypothetical becomes a reality, the difference between being ready and not being ready is huge. So I just want to mention that and acknowledge it as part of the bigger work that we do. And as we draw close to the end of the year and the beginning of the holidays, I just want to thank all of our county staff, from the administrator, whom Assad mentioned, all the way to all of our frontline folks, whether it's in law enforcement or driving a snowplow, not yet thankfully, or whatever you may do, you know, the Board of Social Services or wherever. You've done extraordinary work in an incredibly difficult year. And I want you to know that I see that, I acknowledge it, I applaud it, and it means the world to our constituents. So as the holidays approach, to all of our staff, just thank you for great work in a difficult year, and best wishes for the.
Thank you, Freeholder Bartlett. Freeholder Best.
A report. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Freeholder Duffy. You're on mute.
At least you can see my pretty face. Can you? We only have eight items on the agenda here. Most of them are accepting grants and expending some of the monies from those grants. But I want to commend the administration for getting rid of that dinosaur we've been trying to get out for a long time. Money's well, it'll be well-used, and I commend all my colleagues for job well-done in tough, tough times. I had the privilege of having lunch today with the mayor of West Milford, and she's thrilled with the relationship and said so with, I had a witness there just to verify it. The relationship that the town's up county, or at least, and she's talked for West Milford, I'm sure most of them, if not all of them, that have that relationship with the county. And that's a credit to the Freeholders certainly, but certainly, certainly to the administration and our employees. So I wish everyone a Merry Christmas. We're going to meet before Christmas again, but in my world, every day is a little Christmas, so. Thank you, and God bless us all. We'll get out of this. Someday we'll get out of this. Someday soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Freeholder James.
Yeah, I'm around. You just can't see me because the camera just died. In any case, I just want to congratulate our administrator. I am absolutely thrilled. He has been named by NJAC, the Jersey Association of Counties, as, well, we always know that he's the best administrator in the state. So Friday, they're honoring him, and I am absolutely thrilled for him. We all agree with NJAC that you are the best administrator in the state. And look where we are as a county, and I credit you with all of that, Tony. I am proud of you. I am, I'm just thrilled for you. It's well-deserved. And you had, this has been a tough year, and you have, you know, shepherded us through this year and been a real help to the entire county, really. Every municipality and every mayor and every BA will tell us the same thing. So congratulations. Well-deserved.
I second that. You're awesome, Tony.
Thank you all very much. You get the feeling that somebody told you, oh, I'm dying or something.
Better not. You're not allowed to die until like after Friday.
If that is the case, if you could just be kind enough to let me know. But thank you all. Thank you all. And honestly, and I say this all the time, you know, this is not, this is not a singular sport that I'm in, right? This takes a team. It takes leadership from soon to be commissioners, and you all have been great through all of this. I say it all the time. This sport collectively is the best sport that I'm a pleasure of working for. You all understand. My job, so. And thank you. And of course, all my department heads and all the people around me, right? So no one can do this job alone, and we have great people that work here in the county. My department heads, my division heads, you know, to maintenance staff, to, you name it. Everyone is really doing a great job, and that makes me look good. So again, I accept the award, but I accept the award on behalf of everybody in Passaic County, so, but I appreciate it.
We are blessed. That's for sure.
If I could, I'd like to just point out a few of the resolutions on the agenda this evening that you're going to be voting on, if that's okay? So Resolution number nine is putting up the Clark Street Building, which presently houses our health department and Rutgers Cooperative, another excess piece of property that we will, so this has really been a domino effect between renovating the courthouse annex to the new garage in Wayne. This has really been a domino effect of being able to unload some properties that really have outlived their useful life for us. So similar to 317 Pennsylvania Avenue, we'll go out and we'll auction off Clark Street. I will preface that by saying, don't expect $5.5 million. That's not going to happen, but again, these are old buildings that we spend, you know, good money after bad. So for the public, our health department is moving to River Street in Totoa, which formerly housed our planning department, which we moved back here to Grand Street. So, you know, that process has been in place, and that'll be another old property that we can get rid of. Resolutions number 12 and 13 are two memorandum agreements, one with ASME Local 2273, which represents the rank-and-file CNA's food service workers, porters alike up at Preakness Healthcare Center. And the second one, Resolution 13, is an MOA with Teamsters Local 11, which represents a newly formed group up in our HR department. Small group, but nonetheless, I want to thank the leadership of both of those unions, as well as their membership, for good-spirited negotiations and a contract that I think is fair to both management and the members. So I want to thank both ASME and Teamsters and their members as well. Number 36 is a shared service agreement with the township of Wayne for us to manage their historic museums. We do this, something similar in Clifton, so this is exciting for us. I think this is, you know, one of the first collaborations with the township of Wayne on a shared service, and we're very happy and excited about that. And I know Kelly, she's not on here, but Kelly and her staff are going to do a great job. It's what they do. It's what they're passionate about, and there's Kelly. And they've done a great job here in the county with all of our historic sites. They've done a great job in Clifton at the Hamilton House, and I know they're going to do a great job in Wayne for their museum. So I'm very excited about that. It's just another way that, you know, levels of government come together and work together to achieve some goals. We also have on the agenda number 73, which is a word of contract for Lambert Castle. So the renovations of Lambert Castle, we had gone out twice before. The bids were not favorable. We went out a third time. We got favorable bids. I believe O'Hara and Company is the successful bidder. It came in at our budgeted price, so we're excited about finally getting the Lambert Castle restoration project going. I know Kelly is very excited to get that going as well. We will go out to bid again for the second phase of that, which is the renovation of the Carriage House as a visitor center. So originally, we had it as one bid, then we bifurcated it, so we went out. Those bids were not as good. We weren't sure why, so we're going to go out again, and hopefully, we're going to have the same success the next time we go out as we did with Lambert Castle. But we're very excited to get that project started. And then today, the long-awaited bid opening for the Fairlawn Avenue Bridge Project took place. So we had 16 bidders bid on the project. The low bid was, the price just escaped me. Somebody help me. Was it 16 million? No, 12 million, I believe. 12 or 13 million, and I think the high bid was 25 million. So the process of doing our due diligence, making sure that the apparent low bidder is in fact a low bidder, it will go on now. I don't know whether or not we'll have that on for award on the 29th. It may have to wait till January of the state, since, you recall, this is a federally funded project, so there's other reviews that have to be done other than our own. We'll try to nudge the state and see if we can get their approval to do it on the 29th. Otherwise, we'll award it in January. But for those of us, you know, this is long-awaited, so we're very excited that that project is going to be, that is obviously the bridge in the worst condition in Passaic County, so we're very excited about that. And that's all I have. Thank you for, thank you again, and thank you for indulging me.
I'm just wondering if Dr. Gungill was able to get on yet.
We're still working through the issue.
Okay, I'll come back. We'll come back to it. Okay, we're going to open up the oral portion of the meeting. Could I have a motion to open them?
I'll move it. Second.
Freeholders Apter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yeah.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes. So we'll give everybody a few minutes to log in, ask your questions on Facebook or whatever, or call in, email in.
Okay.
Director, if we don't get Dr. Gungill up and going here, we will put her presentation on the website so that the public can look at it on our website as well. All right? Hopefully, we get her on, but if not, we'll make sure that we get it up.
Director, I have in the chat room, in the WebEx, from Orion Graff. Hello, I have a question about how to nominate someone for the Passaic County Hall of Fame. At this time, also, the director at public@passaiccountyNJ.org. We have not received any emails to that web address. That was up until 5:00 and has even up to this point, we have not received any emails. Only have one comment on the Facebook Live, and it's just a person just saying hello, Robert Williams.
Okay, do you want to give it another minute, or you think that's enough time?
There is, there is a lag with Facebook Live, so I think we should just give it another minute because it's about a minute lag from what we're doing and what broadcasts out through Facebook Live.
Director, while we're waiting, I could answer the question regarding the Hall of Fame. So that gentleman can, obviously, this year, we didn't do anything with the Hall of Fame for obvious reasons going through the pandemic, but he can email Kelly, and her email address is kellyr@passaiccountyNJ.org. And I'll also, I'll type him back in the chat room so he has the exact, if I can.
You did it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And Micah may have to help me. Is that, I think I did it to all panelists.
I sent it to Mr. Graff, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sir, I sent it to Mr. Graff.
Great, thank you.
Okay, what do you think, Joe?
Director, I believe we've given ample time for everyone, and I still don't see anything through any of the other mediums, so.
I move to close. Or I'll second Terry's.
Okay, real call.
Freeholders Apter. Bartlett.
Yes, yes, yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes. Can I have a motion?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear that, Sandy.
So, we go to Page 1, Resolution K1, you need some.
I'll move that. That's, I'll move it.
Second.
Real call.
Freeholders Apter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes. Can I have a motion to move Resolutions L2?
Director, I believe, I believe we need to vote on them separately. They are, they're not a consent agenda.
Okay, so can I have a motion to vote on L?
I'll move one.
I'll second it.
Freeholders Apter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Freeholder. Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
No.
Director Lozera.
Yes. Have a motion to move Resolution L2.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Freeholders Apter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
No.
Director Lozera.
Yes. Okay, to our county council, do we have any late, oh, we have Charlene. Do you want Dr. Gungill to jump in now, or you want to finish the resolutions?
Why don't we finish the consent agenda and then?
Okay.
Is she ready to go?
According, according to the specifics, yes.
I'm at your service, whatever you need.
I would suggest just finishing the consent agenda, and then we can.
Okay. Matt, do we have any late starters amendments?
Yes, Director. Through you, M33. Men to attach the executed business entity disclosure certification from Sun Life Assurance of Canada. The late starters are M90, a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Murray Paving and Concrete LLC for electrical work at 317 Pennsylvania Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey, 07542 pursuant to NJSA 40A11-10. And sec, just for your information, the county is retaining ownership of an adjacent parcel where Assaltoom is located, so this is just work to separate the electrical boxes there. M91, a resolution authorizing an award of contract to T&amp;M Associates for due diligence services related to 495 River Street, Patterson, New Jersey, 07542 pursuant to NJSA 40A. 07542 pursuant to NJ, NJSA 40A, colon, dash, one, SEC. And then the, uh, M92, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 10 2021 Fort Escape hybrids pursuant to NJSA 40A, colon, 11-10 at SEC. Um, Director, there's no need for, um, an executive session. Um, and my daily reminder, if any items on the consent agenda need to be voted individually, just make that motion prior to voting on same. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess nobody wants to pull anything out. Okay, can I have a, um, a motion to amend M33 and add late starters M90 to M92?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Freeholder Bartlett, uh, seconded by Freeholder Lapore. Freeholders, actor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Freeholder, uh, Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes. Can I have, um, a motion to accept consent agenda M1 through 92?
I'll second, yeah.
I have a motion by Bruce James and seconded by, uh, Freeholder Duffy. Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Freeholder Bass.
AJ, you're muted still. All right, let's skip a minute and move on.
Yeah, Freeholder Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes.
Does anybody mind if we do the next two and then we'll, after, uh, Dr. Gungill is, then we'll just have a adjournment? Is that all right?
Sure.
All right, so can I make a, an amendment to, uh, the personnel agenda on page four? Uh, I think you all received a copy of this from, uh, our clerk. Have you not?
I have.
All right. Do I, I don't need, I don't need a motion on that, do I, uh, anybody?
Yes. Yes, yes.
All right, so let me make a motion to, uh, amend, uh, page four of the personnel agenda.
Second.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes.
And I'll move the personnel agenda.
Second.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes, I don't know if you saw that, uh, Freeholder Best got kicked off and he voted yes by the chatroom.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We're all getting kicked off. I'm gonna move the bills list.
Second.
Freeholders, actor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes, and Freeholder Best votes yes.
Thank you, Director.
All right, looking forward to hearing Dr. Gungill.
Yes.
Okay, good evening.
Howdy.
I'm sorry for the delay. Technology is, when it's not. So Micah, whenever you're ready. Okay, great, so, um, most recent update of our COVID response, next slide. All right, believe it or not, today is 200, day 270 since we got COVID. And as of today, we had 33,393 positive cases, 1,202 deaths in Passaic County. Next slide, please. All right, this is a little bit, you know, hard to see, but what I wanted you to see on this slide is that we still are, uh, number five, um, in cases, uh, in, in, uh, in New Jersey. Next slide. This is a slide that shows that the tallest, the tallest bar there is Passaic County, and that means that we have the highest per capita cases in the state. And then we have maintained that from the beginning. It's, it's one of the few things that we don't want to be best at. Next slide, please. All right, this is what we call the Epi curve of the positive cases from day one till today. And you could see at the beginning of this, there were many, many cases. Then you can see where we crushed the curve, and then you can see the increase for the second wave. Um, we have one day there that's an outlier where there were, uh, almost 700 cases of COVID. But, uh, just previous to that, there were many more entities doing testing in Passaic County. So they, we caught many, uh, community spread cases. But that's an anomaly, as you could see, it stands out. What you can see also is that we are definitely, uh, within a wave. I also want you to look at, if you can see on your slide, um, uh, two weeks after, uh, after Halloween, uh, there was a definite increase in cases. Um, and then we have started to see the increase after Thanksgiving. Uh, next slide, please. All right, so this is, I just wanted you to have another graphic of the slide, just showing cases by month. And you could see that April is still, um, the month where we had the most cases. But November is, is a, is a, a very close second. Um, December just started, uh, and I thought, I made this slide on Saturday, I think it was. But as of today, we have almost, uh, 3,000 cases for December already. Next slide. All right, this is the slide that shows positivity rate, which is, uh, the number of positives, uh, divided by the total number of people who tested. At the very beginning, you could see by the height of the curve, um, that was the time we were testing people who had a prescription. So most likely, they were sick. So that's why you're seeing such a high, um, number of people, uh, being positive. And as we crush the curve, and as we change our criteria to any Passaic County resident, you can see that the curve, uh, went down. But you can also see, I'm hoping, that as it, as September into October begins, that's when our second wave has begun, and it is steady, um, uh, up to this point. Uh, next slide, please. All right, this is a breakdown by municipality. The largest, the large blue is the city of Patterson. The darker blue to the right is the city of Passaic. And the other blue, yes, thank you, is the city of Clifton. Thank you. Next slide. All right, uh, this, um, uh, so this shows cases by race. Um, and the largest, uh, number there is white, followed by Hispanic and black. Um, but just note that we only have, um, race data, it's self-reported, it's optional, and it did not begin into our database until perhaps about, uh, I want to say two months into the data collection. So it is not, uh, total representation, but it is a subset. Um, by gender, again, you know that, uh, female are, are, uh, being tested more. So obviously, we're going to see more cases of, but it's pretty much, you know, 51 to 49% by gender. Next slide. All right, so this is the age range. I like to show this slide especially, you know, I don't know if there are any younger adults on the, on this, uh, WebEx, but, um, you can see, I have it in, in, uh, in 10-year increments. Um, you can see the, uh, 21 to 30, 31 to 40, 41 to 50. The number of positive cases are approximately the same. Um, and then the 51 to 60 is, um, much higher, and then you start going down as you, as you see, um, later, uh, decades. However, please recognize that, uh, later decades are not testing necessarily as frequently as the younger decades, and I'll show you that later. But I want you to just remember that the 21-year-olds, the 31-year-olds, the 41-year-olds, and those decades are approximately the same in positive cases that we found. Next slide.
Can I, well, can I just ask a quick question about that last one?
Mm-hmm.
Are those statewide?
No, the, the data I provide is for Passaic County.
Just the Passaic County, okay, thank you.
County, yes.
Um, I'm sorry, Charlene, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, those total numbers are in the thousands and the tens of thousands. That, how many total cases do we have in the county?
Um, 30, 33,000 cases.
Okay, only because the, the left margin has, you know, 14,000, okay.
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're saying. You know what, I didn't pick that up earlier. Um, I guess the most important thing to see that is, is where that is. But I don't know why that popped up like that, I, I'll check into that. But thank you for, for catching that. Yeah, all right, next slide. All right, age range, so you see that a lot of young people are being tested. Um, but look at this slide, and this slide shows you that even though many young people are being tested, older people are dying. And this slide is very, uh, clear that, um, older adults are, are negatively affected, um, by passing from COVID-19. Next slide. Which leads us into a long-term care facilities. Um, so when I pulled this data, it was a couple of days ago. And, um, as of today, the active outbreaks in our long-term care facilities in Passaic County are up to 23 outbreaks. And the cumulative outbreaks now, so this is adding this data and the original data from earlier in the year, uh, is 61 outbreaks. Um, the, the resident cases are now 210, um, and the cumulative outbreak resident cases of 1435. But I think the most, um, positive thing about this particular slide is under active resident deaths and staff deaths. And you could see that with the active, in other words, second wave, um, cases in long-term care facilities, we have not, uh, seen recorded deaths that are due to COVID. Um, and so the, so that's an interesting piece of information. Um, I'm not sure if it has to do with, um, you know, perhaps people are dying of other things. But, um, but it is not, it is not recorded in the state registry that they're dying of COVID currently. Um, so that's, that's, uh, that's an interesting piece of information that I discovered. Next slide. Uh, so this particular slide, we're, you know, getting a lot of calls from, um, from, uh, parents and from schools regarding, uh, the children who, uh, the, the, the number of cases that we're, that we're seeing in schools. Um, I think I just want people to understand that the Board of Eds are the ones that make the decisions to go into remote or, you know, however they decide to respond to cases. But there are quite a number of cases, and as has been the case since schools reopened, most of those cases are tied to other activities and not necessarily being in school. And the schools have made tremendous progress in making sure that the kids are socially distanced. Um, they have done tremendous work in trying to keep the kids safe. And it is paying off because they're safe in the school buildings. But it is what they do after school that is, is giving us so many, um, cases in, in the school districts. Uh, next slide, please. All right, so the next couple of slides are gonna talk about our testing program. Uh, the at-home testing program continues, uh, really nicely. Um, this slide is, uh, shows you, the, the graph on the left shows you that, uh, young adults, 18 to 30, are making use of our test-at-home program. Um, very much so over, especially the last, uh, month or so. Um, the 51 to 60 age group is the second highest, and they have been the one that has surprised me by, um, having such a large number of people in that age group using this, uh, type of testing, for whatever reason. But, um, but, uh, I just, you know, I think it's important to note that the young adults might not be online at our test sites. They may not go to the doctors or the urgent care, but they're getting the at-home test kits and they're testing themselves because they want to know too. Next slide, please. All right, this is the at-home, uh, testing data again, um, just by municipality. Um, and you can see that Wayne, and from the beginning, Wayne has, uh, Wayne residents have, have been the residents who have used this program the most in the county. And it continues to be the same, uh, followed by Clifton, uh, and the city of, of Patterson. North Hill and West Milford have, uh, also availed themselves of, of this. And, you know, I really encourage people, uh, to, to try it. Um, it's very easy to do it at home. Um, yes, there is a, a certain level of, um, of computer knowledge and, and, and comfort. But, um, but it's, uh, it's, you know, you can do it in your, in the privacy of your home, and especially now, not having to go out into the cold. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, just a nice picture of our, of our RV, um, we are at every site. And this, uh, represents the, uh, schedule for, um, December. As of now, we have tested over 25,000, we've done 25,000 tests at our, at our mobile testing, uh, site. Next slide, please. All right, so some things are, I'm sure you're hearing a lot about the vaccination, uh, program. Um, Passaic County, uh, is part of the state's vaccination, uh, plan. Uh, we have been in conversation and in planning, uh, with the State Department of Health, and they in turn with the CDC. We've also been in conversation with the other local health departments, the OEM, and all of the stakeholders with our plan as well. Uh, I believe it was three weeks ago, I had to submit to the State Department of Health, uh, the plan for, uh, Passaic County. And in Passaic County, we have submitted to the state seven, um, uh, sites for our, um, uh, vaccination program. And, uh, they have been accepted by the state. There are some, uh, things that we have to do to make sure that we can receive and also vaccinate our residents. But, um, uh, all of these have been received. Uh, just this afternoon, around 3:00, I had another follow-up conversation with the State Department of Health, where they have, uh, informed me that around, uh, the middle of the, in about 10 days, we should be receiving our first set of vaccines. Uh, the hospitals are receiving theirs a little bit earlier. And so, um, it's really critical that we have everything in place for, um, for when we receive the vaccines. Uh, we are required to, uh, vaccinate 70% of the adult population. And one of the questions I get, uh, from people who call my office is, um, can children get the vaccine? And the answer is no. All of the clinical trials were done with adults, 18 and older. So, um, I believe that there are a couple of trials right now, and they're not close to the completion, but they are, um, testing, uh, uh, different clinical trials on children. But the vaccines that are coming, the ones that you've heard about, the ones that are very close to being approved in the emergency, um, approval process are all, uh, only for adults. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. I've also been asked questions about who is going to be vaccinated. And I pulled this directly from the CDC website. This is, shows the proposed Phase 1 sequence. 1A, which is what's going to begin in less than two weeks, is going to target healthcare personnel and long-term care facility residents, so the nursing home residents. And 1B would be essential workers, which also includes the education sector, first responders and so forth. And Phase 3, other adults with high-risk conditions and adults 65-plus. This is the proposed sequence, but this is, you know, a moving target that could change. And so when we do get our vaccines, we will get very clear instructions on who will be the target for the first couple of vaccines. Next slide. This is a breakdown of who is in Phase 1. You can see that healthcare personnel is expanded. So hospitals, they will be receiving theirs, I mentioned to you, within the next couple of days, next week to be exact. And they will be responsible for vaccinating their staff and so on. Long-term care facilities, they had to submit their information to DOH. They will be doing some of the vaccinations. But the state is also utilizing pharmacists, pharmacies to do some of the long-term care vaccination. As you can see, there are two outpatient clinics and so forth. And last bubble there is public health. So the health departments in Passaic County will be part of that first 1A group. These are just, this group is not finalized, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of what that is going to look like. And again, this is taken directly from the CDC. Next slide. One of the things that the CDC did to come up with their decision on who will be vaccinated first is, you know, they looked, you know, they had ethical considerations, they had vulnerable population considerations, and the science of what we're doing. And these things are, vaccinations and those processes go through a very rigorous review process with independent people who are able to make decisions based on science and knowledge and their own experiences and background in the science. But they also have conversations, they have task forces with stakeholders in the community to discover who people think are critical for our safety and security going forward. And so this slide speaks a little bit about that. And these are some of the response, the, how people responded as to who should be vaccinated and when. And again, these are things that are taken into consideration. It's not finalized, but it's to give you an idea that it's not a eeny-meeny-miny-mo, that there are some, there are some thought processes into making those decisions. Next slide, please. All right, I just wanted to let you guys know that while this is going on, while we're planning for the next stage, we continue. All the local health departments in Passaic County continue to investigate COVID cases, to do contact tracing, to send out travel advisories, and all the other diseases, because we have a lot of other things that we do. We inspect restaurants, we do all kinds of other things. And that, those things are still continuing as everything is focused on COVID-19. We still have our deliverables, which have not been waived by DOH. In other words, our deliverables for the year, for every year, has remained the same even in light of the pandemic. So we have to still continue because we have those deliverables to deliver, to make. Next slide, please. I wanted to introduce you to what's coming down the pike from the health department. And that is a health education campaign that my team is working with Neela, the PIO office with. And it is to really let people know, you know, what is, what is expected, what is required. And we're doing that in addition to also working on vaccination information. And towards that end, probably about 4 o'clock this afternoon, I sent a widget to our IT department to put on our website, which came from the State Department of Health. And it's a widget that answers frequently asked questions regarding the vaccination process and, you know, concerns that people have. So though the state is going to lead that, that process of educating, we are also going to put something together for our population as well. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And so I just want to remind people, because I know it gets disheartening sometimes, but I just want to remind you that this is a long-term thing. We have to, you know, our response is a sustained response. And I know it gets, it's tiring, it's tiring for all of us. But as a county, if we continue to work together, to get tested, to follow the, you know, the rules, the social distancing rules, wearing those masks, we will get through this. It's tough, but we're tough too, and we will get through this. So I wanted to end on that note tonight. Thank you.
Charlene, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Actually, I have a two-parter about the vaccines. Do we know how many we're getting and what brand?
So we don't know how many we're getting, but we know the brand is going to be Moderna. Moderna.
Yeah.
I learned that this afternoon around 3:00. The hospitals are going to get Pfizer. I think that's planned, might be, because the hospitals right now have the capability for the ultra-cold. While public health is trying to get the infrastructure for the ultra-cold, the Moderna is what is targeted for us. I was told this afternoon that, that we're probably going to be given a small amount. We're not to, you know, the small amount is going to be, the expectation is to hopefully be able to do about 100 to 200 vaccines a day. And the reason for that is just to, you know, to get ourselves used to the whole process. If there are issues, we can work those issues out, whether the issues are in location, whether it is, you know, issues with the product itself. So, you know, we're just trying to find our feet and to understand what's going on. So the State Department of Health have told me this afternoon that, that the process will begin throughout the state, but it's going to begin in a much more reduced fashion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moderna is not approved yet, right?
None of them are approved.
Well, I think that Pfizer one is close. I don't know if Moderna is close. I think Moderna is better because you don't have to have some ridiculous equipment to keep it, you know, from going bad, so it's probably better.
Dr. Gungo, I'm glad to see, you know, the public information campaign continuing. You're working closely with Neela and others to get that information out. I hope that we will also plan as the vaccine is rolled out. I think there is a deep level of distrust, unfortunately, due to the politics, as well as, you know, just because of the unprecedented nature of this pandemic and the speed at which these vaccines came out. So I think there is a deep level of mistrust in the public as far as being, as far as wanting to take this vaccine, more so than we might assume. From some of the survey data I've seen, including from hospital workers and healthcare workers even themselves, have some doubt. And many people don't want to be the first in line. They want to see others get it, and they want to be assured that it's okay. And I think it's important that we point out to folks that even though this was an incredibly fast process, each of these trials, each of the trials had 10, had tens of thousands of people who were in these studies, were tested in these studies. So even though this process was much faster than usual, it was not less thorough. It was not a less thorough process for testing these vaccines. And I think it's important, we're going to need to, and as public officials, as this freeholder board, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but, you know, I plan to get the vaccine as soon as I'm eligible. And we saw that President Obama, President Bush, and President Clinton have volunteered to get the vaccine as soon as they're eligible publicly. I think it's important that we plan a strategy to build trust and show that folks are getting the vaccine and are okay. And that that's how they help protect themselves and their families and communities and get back to the way of life that we all enjoyed.
Dr. Gungo, you can stab me with the vaccine as soon as you get it. I'll do it publicly.
I wish, Bruce.
Terry, we should. That old dial-a-porter should do it too.
The phone call button.
Listen, I need your help.
I also want to just say, I have not read as much as I need to read about it because I want to know about it myself. But I think one of the exciting things about this vaccine is that it's not using, like, in general, they use a weakened or inactivated product, you know, like a weakened coronavirus product to create the vaccine. In this case, they're not doing that at all. What they're doing is they're saying they're creating something, a messenger RNA, which is telling our cells to create a response. And you've seen pictures of the COVID-19 organism where there are spikes on it. So they're teaching our bodies to respond to the spikes and that then our body will trigger a response to that to protect us from the virus. So in other words, when that vaccine comes out, it is not going to give you a mild form of COVID-19 because there is no COVID virus in it. And I think that's important for people to know because many times they think that they're going to get from it. They're not going to get sick from it. This is just a messenger RNA telling your body to create this when this thing hits you. And we've used messenger RNA to trigger the body's response to target specific cancer cells. So, you know, it's, it's 21st century, but it's not brand new. Coronavirus is brand new for us. And they're using the best science to protect us and to create this. So the more I read, the more I'm interested in it. I will continue to read about it. You know, once I learn more information, I'll share it with you.
Yeah, it's really not new technology though, right? They've been doing this kind of research for a while, the RNA. So listen, as far as I know, it's safe, I'm taking it to suicide.
It's not a new technology, but I think this is the first time it's being used widely for a vaccine, as opposed to some other type of...
Thankfully, we haven't had any other pandemics that would have used this, so.
Right. And I think, I think Dr. Gungo's point is a very important one for people to hear, which is that it's different from the flu vaccine, which is a weakened or inert version of the flu virus. There's no actual coronavirus in the coronavirus vaccines, whether it's Moderna or Pfizer. They're using this new RNA technology in place of including the virus in the vaccine.
Yeah.
All right.
Anyone else have questions for Dr. Gungo?
It's John, Dr. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
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 We've got another two weeks. Okay, thank you, Dr. Gungo. That was really informative. Just one quick question, I don't remember. Which one is the two shots, the Moderna or the Pfizer?
Both are.
Oh.
Both are two shots, yeah.
I didn't know that. I thought one wasn't, okay.
Yeah, one of the things that we're working on is to, to be able to call people back because that's going to be an issue, to get in time to get the second shot. But in order to get that 94, 95% efficacy level, we have to get the two shots in, sort of like the hepatitis B shot and so on. So we're actually working with the state. They've identified a vendor who is probably going to be able to do that for us. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts with this. And, you know, we just hope that we can at least get a few people who are vulnerable to get vaccinated to protect them. I think that would be critical for us and our communities.
Thank you. Thank you again, Dr. Gungo. I guess we can move on to Germit and have a motion to adjourn.
Second. Freeholders, Opter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Ass?
He said yes.
Doffey?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director LaFour?
Yes.
Director Lazzara?
Yes. Thanks, everybody. Be safe.
You too.
See you.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Be safe.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.